Okay. May I just start? Begin our meeting now. Good evening and welcome to our December 12th regular session of the City Council. For those of you who tuned in last time, there's probably a few new faces up here tonight, so I'll take a quick moment to introduce them. We have down here Councilman Hen representing District One and Councilwoman Gardner representing District Six. Six, very good. We did have a special meeting yesterday where we sworn all of the elected council members, whether they were reelected, newly elected, or appointed and elected. So we officially have no appointed council members now. Everybody up here is elected. So hopefully, we can put that to bed. Madam Clerk, roll call.
The record will show that all members are present.
Thank you. And City Attorney, do we have a closed session report?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. If you would, we'll be standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, and that will be followed by the invocation by Pastor John Embry with the Newport Harbor Lutheran Church.
Who's going to lead the pledge?
We'll let Councilmember Hen lead the pledge.
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
This is God. We gather in the exciting holiday season with houses and ships sparkling in joyous spectacle. May these days also be days of wholeness for our community, for our leaders, our residents, our visitors, our strangers. We gather for the business of government. It's the business of caring for people, children and youth like our scouts here tonight, to adults, to the aged. May the City Council's work be done with graciousness, with diligence. May those who come to speak be compassionate as well as passionate. For peace and in peace we pray. Amen.
We have one presentation this evening, and presenting that or making the presentation will be the Library Foundation. I believe they have a check for us, which is always a good thing.
Good evening, Mayor Rosansky. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And congratulations to all the newly-elected council. And may you all have a great holiday. To get the holiday spirit in the right frame of mind, I have a check for the city. This one is for $121,650.
Big one.
And I don't know who wants to...
Should I come down?
I feel like I'm on Jeezer, no deal here. Mr. Mayor, your first official act.
I'll take that deal.
With this check, this year, we've contributed just a little over a quarter of a million and about another $100,000 in programs to the city as well. So it's a great relationship that we share with the city, and we thank you for the support of the library as well.
Thank you.
I guess we should... The official handshake. Thank you, Mayor.
For those of you that don't know Mr. Edwards, he's a former mayor of Newport Beach also.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones and pagers off or set them in the silent mode. This is a time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gardner, do you have anything you'd like to announce?
I do not.
Councilwoman Diggle?
No, I don't.
Councilman Webb?
Yes, I'd like to welcome Troop 746 from the LDS Church that is in Bonita Canyon. I understand that they are here to work and fulfill one of the requirements in the citizenship of the Community Merit Badge, which is to attend a public meeting and listen to what goes on and then be able to tell your counselor what happened at this meeting. So if you gentlemen have not looked, out there on the counter, there should be some agendas like this. This tells you what we're doing tonight. And there are other reports. If there's one that you particularly find interesting, you might take that along with you so you can show your counselor and help out in your merit badge. But anyway, welcome, and we really appreciate the scouting program trying to teach about the community.
In case you didn't know, once you guys get ready to go for your Eagle, you'll be meeting with Councilman Webb because he's our Eagle Coordinator for Rancho Del Mar District. So remember that. Councilman Hen?
I have nothing.
Councilman Curry?
Mr. Mayor, this is the time of year when people engage, particularly here in Newport Beach, in into-the-year tax planning, and I want to remind everyone of the opportunity to get that important tax deduction through your contribution to the Newport Beach Centennial Monument, which will be constructed in McFadden Square. People can contact either Bernie's Falsted through the Corona Mar Chamber of Commerce or through the city for more information. It's an opportunity to have your or your family's name engraved and granted as a permanent remembrance of our centennial, but also to reduce your taxes over to Uncle Sam for next year.
Mayor Protem Selich?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an item I'd like to have staff put on a future agenda, and if you'll bear with me, I'd just like to read a short statement to give some background to the request. This is in regard to Newport Center Park. For the past 15 years, the park north of the Central Library has been dedicated, general planned, and zoned for open space in a park. Approximately three years ago, the City Council approved a concept plan for the development of the park and funded the preparation of construction documents for that concept plan. To date, those plans are approximately 90 percent complete. Approximately 18 months ago, a donor stepped forward and offered to contribute substantial funds towards the construction of the park. In the current year's budget, $200,000 has been budgeted towards the construction of the park. Although the original intent was to construct the park in one phase, construction costs have risen and potential available funding has become limited to the point where a better solution may be to develop the park in phases. The Public Works Department, at my request, has developed a three-phase budget that would allow a phased construction of the park if we so desire. The lower phase of the park is primarily the parking lot adjacent to the library. The center phase is the developed passive portion of the park, and the upper phase is the native planting area. The budget includes the addition to the concept plan of a 30-space parking lot where Farallon Drive intersects Avocado to serve the upper portion of the park. This suggestion was made and supported by a number of city council members during a recent city council discussion at the park site. The resident beneficiaries of this park have waited 15 years for a park, and further delay to obtain full funding seems to be less beneficial than approaching it on a phased approach. As long as there are no park improvements on the property, it will continue to be considered by many a vacant parcel, even though it is a dedicated park and therefore subject to constant suggestions for other uses. Development of the middle phase would unequivocally demonstrate to all that this is a park and would provide a need of passive park to this area of the city. So with this background in mind, I request that the city manager bring forward for the city council's consideration, no later than the second city council meeting in January, the following actions for the city council's consideration. One, approval of constructing the park per the approved concept plan with the addition of the upper parking lot in phases with the middle phase coming first. The construction of the arbor or trellis structure in the middle phase would be part of a future phase or separate donation. This phase would be estimated to be cost around $1 million. Number two, accepting $600,000 from a donor to go towards the construction of the middle phase as stated above. The donor would get naming rights for the entire park with the provision that other naming opportunities will be available, and that staff would also be authorized to finalize the donation agreement with the donor. Three, conceptual approval to amend the 2006-07 budget to increase funding for the park from $200,000 to $400,000, subject to final construction bids. And finally, number four, direct staff to complete construction documents for the middle section phase as soon as possible and place them out to bid. And I'll just hand this to the city manager so he can have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I know we can't debate or talk about this, but I would like to see, when it comes back to us, one option that has not been mentioned by Councilmember Selich, and that option would be the feasibility and cost of having an active soccer field placed in the upper area as well as what... Some sort of contact with the sports organizations to find out if there really is a need for active fields in that area.
Got that, Homer?
I think so. At least for tonight. I'll have it next month.
Okay, I have two announcements. The first, I'd like to announce that on December 14th, from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m., we're going to be having a toy drive here at the City Hall. And the toy drive is to benefit families of our military, and we're going to have a special appearance by Santa Claus. The event is called Operation Christmas for our troops, three, because I think this is the third year we're doing it. And I believe that there'll be some vehicles here. We'll have fire trucks, Humvees, other things.
I think there's another army vehicle that's going to be here.
Other army vehicles. So hopefully, we can all come out from 10:00 to 11:00, Thursday, December 14th. Also, I have a request of city staff. I would like to see the formation of a city-level committee to discuss or that would handle the... Or address the problem of dense residential occupancy and problems in our town. It would take up issues of... So we're living facilities, group homes, properties that, for one reason or another, create issues in neighborhoods because of too many occupants. And so it would probably be, in my vision, a council-level committee with at least a couple of council members serving on it, maybe a planning commissioner and a number of residents. The details will still be worked out, but I would like to see some work on that and a staff report back, either the first or second meeting in January. Thank you. Moving along, Madam Clerk.
Consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar, items 1 through 16, are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor, state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Councilwoman Gardner, do you have any items you'd like to pull?
Nothing.
Councilwoman Diggle?
None, Mayor Rosansky, but I did want to comment on number nine, where the work is... The city is accepting the road work that was done along Jamboree from San Joaquin to Ford Road. And as part of that work, we also lengthened the turn pocket onto East Bluff to improve traffic flow when the school is in progress. So thanks for completing the job.
Thank you. Councilman Hen?
None.
Curry?
I'd like to ask that the approval of the minutes, item one, be pulled so that I might abstain on it since I was not at the meeting. And I would like to note that on page 860 and item 18, I'm listed as the motion maker, and since I was not here, I don't think I made the motion.
All right, do we need to pull that or just register his abstention?
You can just register the abstention. We'll correct it.
Correct the mistake.
Mr. Mayor, then I would need to do the same thing regarding the minutes.
Okay, and I imagine Councilwoman Gardner as well. All abstaining.
We have four. Good.
We have four, yeah. Mayor Protem Selich?
I have none.
Okay, I have none. Staff, have anything to pull?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item number 12, which is a request of a waiver of council policy B8 from Newport Harbor High School to hold a surf contest, that has been withdrawn by the applicant because of the date proved not to be a good date for them.
Okay, so it's not going to be continued, just withdrawn?
That's right.
Does the public have any items that they would like to pull? Please come down at this time. Please come... I don't think the issue you want to talk about is going to be pulled. You're here for the agenda item on the general plan? Okay, that's not right now. Anybody else? Okay, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move approval to consent calendar with the exception of item number 12.
Second.
All in favor?
Motion carries.
Thank you. Public hearing. Did I go too far? No. Yeah. Public hearings.
Item number 17 is the daycare regulations code amendment number 2006-007 to revise the land use regulations to distinguish daycare centers for children and those for adults and establish spacing, concentration, parking, and operational standards for large family childcare homes.
Do we have a staff report?
Your planner, Patrick Alfred, will give the staff report.
Thank you.
Honorable mayor and members of the City Council, this amendment was initiated by the City Council back in September. What it does is amend the zoning code to allow the city to take full advantage of the standards that are allowed for large family childcare homes under the California Childcare Daycare Facilities Act. What this amendment does, it distinguishes family childcare homes from other smaller-scale daycare centers. It requires a use permit issued by the planning director for the large family childcare homes and establishes standards dealing with spacing and concentration, parking, and noise control. We feel that these are necessary to avoid particular problems, particularly those dealing with overconcentration in these facilities in residential neighborhoods. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions of Patrick? Nobody? Okay. Well, why don't we open it up to the public for comment? A public hearing for comment.
Good evening. My name is Joe Garrett. I live in Newport Beach, specifically in Corona Del Mar. I'd like to congratulate Mayor Rosansky and also the other members of the council on your election. And I'd like to thank Patrick Alfred and the staff for doing such a fine report on daycare use facilities. I'm very pleased about the report and the changes that are being made, but I do have a question that was... Unfortunately, I'm not as prepared as I probably should be. I didn't get a chance to understand that it was going to city council till late... Till very early this evening, right before the meeting. One of my questions is, although there is a spacing requirement that's put in for 500 feet, it seems to make a distinction between the large daycare facility and another daycare use. My question is, and my particular concern is, what would happen if on an R2-zone lot someone wanted to put two small daycare facilities within right next to each other? I'm not sure if Mr. Alfred can answer that or not.
Patrick, do you have a quick answer?
State law only allows us to apply spacing requirements to the large family daycare homes, which are 9 to 14. The smaller ones have to be allowed by right in residential districts, so we don't have the ability to regulate those by overconcentration.
So effectively, if you had a duplex, you could have two small daycares?
Yes.
And even though it'd equal one large one, let's say?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I guess to follow up, I would go ahead and request that, you know, whatever's been done, go ahead and proceed and just unfortunately, I guess I'm saying to Patrick, that there would be nothing that they could do... There's absolutely nothing can be done with the small daycare facilities at all then. Is that understood?
Okay.
Including any kind of concentration or parking or also including the fact that there would have to be a resident living in the facility as well?
I'm sorry. I'm just... I'm trying to understand... Why don't you give us all your questions, Joe, and then we'll get Patrick back up here.
I'm sorry. What I'm trying to get at is, there seems to be a big difference between the ability to place the spacing and concentration and other regulatory issues between the large daycare facilities and which ones you're able to put to the small ones. And I'm trying to find out if there's any specific things that can be done, even if it is a small daycare facility. And if it's concentration or if it's having the homeowner live in the same facility like is in a large one, I'd just like those to be added. If there's absolutely nothing that can be done, then there's nothing that can be done, and I think the city's done all that they can do. But I'd like to see if there is something that can be done that it be done.
Thank you. Would you like to comment on that?
Take a stab at it. The way I read the proposed ordinance changes, the regular regulations, the licensing, the care provider's residence, additional standards would apply to both the small and the large. Is that correct, Patrick? And it's just the spacing limitations that would only apply to the large?
Yes, that's correct. The standards we are adding to the code basically reflect the state law, but by having it in our code, it gives us the ability to enforce it locally, but I have to go to the state. But as I indicated before, our ability to deal with spacing, concentration, parking, and noise can only apply to the large family childcare homes.
Thank you.
But just to highlight, I think, some of the other requirements, like that the resident actually live in the home, those other requirements apply to all of them.
Would apply. So they would actually have to have a resident operator in... Like a duplex in both units?
Correct.
It's like the husband could live in one and the wife in another or something? Is that...
Well, it says each family childcare home shall be the principal residence of the care provider.
Of the prin...
Principal residence of the care provider.
Of the care provider.
And the use shall be clearly residential in character. These regulations...
So let's say they had an employee that lived in the back house, and they were... Would they be considered the principal care provider?
We'll have to look at the regulations of the state and how they implement them and implementing ours. So my guess would be no, that you couldn't have a... An employee of the care facility live in the back and then claim that as a separate licensed entity. You'd have to get a separate license for it.
Well, I think that's what his point was, is that can you get two licenses? If you have two on a lot, two homes on a lot or a duplex, whatever, can you get a license for the A unit and the B unit?
If you have a separate individual that has, you know... I mean, if you have two separate...
Care providers.
Care providers that make that duplex in the front or the back their residence.
Primary residence.
Then they would be able... If they comply with all the other regulations, then they would be able to do that.
Because we can't...
If it was a small facility.
Because we can't exercise this 500-foot limit on the small care provider.
As to the small. Correct. But there are other regulations that somewhat limit that.
And what would those be?
The fact that they have... The care provider has to have the location as their primary residence.
Okay, but that one's probably pretty easy to circumvent if they wanted to.
I have no idea yet.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other comments from the public?
Dick Nichols was a councilman until I was upset. I did call the Californian before on this particular matter, and they said that they would not issue two licenses on the same property. Now, that's kind of a queasy because it doesn't apply to apartment buildings. In an apartment building, they said they wouldn't issue two licenses if you came through the same entrance. And that was able to defeat the Spencer Recovery Facility that bought the property down by the American Legion. Whether it would work here or not, I don't know, on a duplex. And so I'd like to suggest that we try and follow that up because I do think it has merit. I believe you've done a very fine job on this, and my compliments to you.
Thank you.
But I do think we can follow that up, Steve, and possibly prevent two small ones or a small and a large on adjacent properties.
Well, certainly, I would agree that, to the extent that we can control the overconcentration of these facilities, it's really along the same lines for the committee that I just asked to be formed, where we're having, you know, dense residential occupancy situations occur all over town because people are gaming the system or whatever they're doing to take advantage of these laws where the city is prohibited from really regulating because of the small nature. But when you add up all these small facilities, they become a big facility, and it's... And the impacts are still there, and the residents still feel it.
Yeah, and I might add that I think that we've learned with the regulations that we have with the group facilities that we do need to work closely with the licensing agencies, and we have started that process. And so with this process, after we've enacted it, we can work with the licensing facilities to make sure that, to the extent that there's attempts to circumvent, we work with them to make sure that that doesn't happen. So that's why I'm saying, is I don't know yet that they're going to be able to circumvent it until we actually work with the state and try to avoid that in those situations. And I don't know how many there's going to be where you have a duplex and with two.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments? Come on down.
Hello.
Hello?
Congratulations to you all.
Thank you.
Stephanie Murgia, Newport Beach. I'm here on behalf of Leadership Tomorrow. We're seeking nominations for the Community Leadership Award, Excellence in Community Leadership.
Oh, wait, Stephanie, I think...
Yep. Are we not there yet?
You're off agenda, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We've got to wait for public comments section. No problem. Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Oop, do I have a motion?
I move the recommended... I move the recommended action.
All in favor?
Motion carries.
Next item is a report from our planning commission... Plan department. Who's going to give that tonight?
You got one.
Oh, do your agenda. Sorry.
Leave him.
Hey, I'm new. What do I know?
I want...
Oh, public comments, okay. There we go. Stephanie, come on back up here. Where'd she go? Yeah. I know.
Okay, do you want me to go through the whole thing again?
Sure, why not?
Okay. Stephanie Murgia, Newport Beach.
There you go.
Representing Leadership Tomorrow, I'm seeking nominations for Excellence in Community Leadership Award. If you know anybody who is an unsung hero, please consider nominating them for the Excellence in Community Leadership Award sponsored by Leadership Tomorrow. Nominations are due by January 8th, 2007. Leadership Tomorrow is a nonprofit organization offering educational program in civic awareness and leadership to the communities of Newport Beach, Irvine, and Costa Mesa. The program helps local citizens acquire better understanding of civic leadership through interaction with a broad range of local experts and community leaders. This year's Excellence in Community Leadership Award recipient will be recognized at the Third Annual Celebrating Leadership Awards, Thursday, February 22nd, 2007, at Park Prairie in Costa Mesa. Past Community Leadership Award winners have included Dr. Robert Barbeau, Debbie Magnussen, John Debco, Dwayne McKinney, and Bill Vardulus. The Excellence in Community Leadership Award is presented to a person who exemplifies leadership in community regardless of affiliation or position. Leadership Tomorrow encourages nominations for all forms of leadership... Excuse me, leadership, not just those of high-ranking or socially prominent individuals. Nominations for the Community Award should include a description of leadership characteristics, accomplishments, and activities, a brief biography of the nominee, and contact information for both the nominator and the nominee. No formal application is necessary. Nomination package should be sent to Leadership Tomorrow Awards nominations, 1470 Jamboree Road, Newport Beach, California 92660, or submitted by email to info@leadershiptomorrow.org with the subject line Leadership Tomorrow Awards. Nominations must be received no later than Monday, January 8th, 2007. For additional information, contact the website at www... For additional information, contact the website at www.leadersiatomorrow.org, or Jeff Parker at 949-729-4408.
Thank you, Stephanie. When does your next program start for the-
The program started in September. We've completed three programs so far. The orientation, which happened in September, Arts Day, which was October, November was Education Day, and tomorrow, Thursday, is Business Day. And we'll be touring the Times Building and also Communication, the Communication Buildings.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
As a graduate of that program, it's an excellent program, and I encourage anybody who's interested in finding more about leadership and, and local government to apply. I think they start well in the fall, obviously, but excellent program. Anybody else? Public comments. Okay, we'll close the public comments section. And oral reports now from our city council on committee activities. I don't believe that there's been a lot of committee activity. Has anybody been to a committee meeting last month or so?
I would suggest that we look at this list and pare it down for those that are no longer active to, and maybe reconsider adding some to it, but that, I think the list can be modified significantly.
I think that's an excellent idea.
I think we ought to drop the Centennial Committee.
Yes, Centennial's over.
Yes, I think so. Centennial, very good. I think that's an excellent idea, and maybe we can review that and home or night and get together over that. All right, moving right along. Planning Commission Agenda and Oral Report Status. I believe Dave Leepo will be giving that report.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, the December 7th Planning Commission meeting, excuse me, there were actions taken on several items, and several items were continued. In the agenda that you have from that meeting, item number two, 31st Street LLC Mixed Use Project, that was continued because there had been changes requested by the Planning Commission that had not yet been submitted to the city. That should be coming back at the first meeting in January. Item number three, Isla Vista Homes, was also continued to the second meeting in January. There were some technical problems with the track map on that proposal for the residential units that required revision, and the applicant has agreed to delay that until the second meeting in January. Excuse me. Item number four, Newport Brewing Company, that will be coming back, the first meeting in January. The investigative work on that has been completed, and that item is ready for the agenda. Item number five, Newport Bay Marina, this was approved at the previous Planning Commission meeting. However, there were a lot of changes and conditions of approval that were set forth at the previous meeting, and the Planning Commission asked that that resolution and conditions come back at the December meeting for a final check and review by the Planning Commissioners. There was quite a lot of discussion, and some of the changes, conditions were revised even at the meeting, including requirements for a formal view easement between the two mixed-use buildings at this particular location on, on the peninsula. Those were formalized, the project was then approved with the conditions as revised at the meeting. And item number seven-
David?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. On that, I'm just curious, how can the appeal period expire November 30th if the Planning Commission was still making changes to conditions of approval on December the 7th?
There was confusion procedurally on this one in terms of what actions were permitted at the meeting this past week. The vote was taken back in November, so to be safe, we reported on this at the previous City Council meeting because we believe the appeal period expired 14 days from the November meeting, not from the December meeting. Does that make sense?
No.
No, well, no. That appeal period technically expired. This should have been just, you know, approval of the resolution, or excuse me, of the conditions of approval as submitted at the December meeting. So there's technically no appeal period left on that one. That does not answer your question?
I won't go into it now. Talk about it later.
Please continue.
Okay, finally, item number seven, the Ray Residence on Bay Island. This was for a use permit to allow the existing non-conforming dwelling to be expanded by up to seventy, excuse me, to have up to 75% of the existing structure remodeled and rebuilt. There was also an encroachment of the deck off the main living level into the bayside front yard. Those both were, were, excuse me, were approved by the Planning Commission. The building height actually was being reduced, so it was 35 feet before. With this approval, the building height would be 28 feet. We also decided there was no modification required after all for the trellis. It was approved with limited conditions, and go forward and build that. Any other questions?
None, thank you. Okay, moving right along. Item number 19.
Mr. Mayor, we're gonna continue item number 19 for some further staff work, so that will be coming back at a future meeting.
Okay, do we, mo- motion on that?
Yes.
Will we continue item 19?
Do I have to have a public comment on that? Yes. Why don't we open that up for public comment? Seeing none, close the public hearing, and we will vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, item number 20, General Plan Implementation.
Item number 20 is the General Plan Implementation, Completion of Local Coastal Program, and Appointment of an Ad-Hoc Implementation Committee.
Who's giving the report?
Sharon will be.
Sharon, okay. Got a little PowerPoint for us? Oh, good move, Mike. Look, his hand's right on that thing.
Shortly before the election, I remember telling Greg Ramirez that we should be careful what we wish for, and now the general plan has been approved, and now we need to implement the plan. So you have a staff report that outlines some options for the City Council to consider during an interim period before we complete our comprehensive revision to the zoning code. And tonight, on those issues, we're, we're asking just for City Council direction as to whether you want us to prepare an interim ordinance, and if so, what provisions should be in that ordinance. And we're also recommending the formation of a committee. And if we can go to the next slide, Greg. In all the cases, all of these slides that will be following, what we'll be discussing is the consistency of the use of a property, as well as the density and intensity of use allowed with the general plan and with the zoning. And we're talking about the new general plan and the existing zoning ordinance. And the first situation that we have is where we have consistency with the existing zoning, but inconsistency with the new general plan. And this is one that staff at least thought was fairly straightforward, and we could have an interim ordinance that would prohibit such uses and developments, just to make it absolutely clear that we intend to be consistent with the new general plan immediately. Another possibility that, that we could do along with this is to have some kind of a grandfather provision in the interim ordinance that would allow projects that had a city discretionary approval consistent with the general plan and zoning prior to the election on November 7th. Because there is one or two projects that had a use permit or something, went through the process just before the election, and the council might choose to, to let them go ahead.
Council vote.
So those improve, I mean, those approvals would have had to been made prior to November 7th?
Correct.
And that would be through the Planning Commission or City Council?
Yes.
Or the city staff?
That's true.
So whatever level was required at the time?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, and that means then the final discretionary approval would have been granted?
Yes. The, the final city discretionary approval. There may still be a need for a coastal development permit or something from another agency.
Thank you.
And actually, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you want me to run through all of them and then come back for you to have your discussion and give us direction, or do it as we go through.
How long you think your presentation is?
I have a total of five slides.
Why don't we just run through it all, and then we'll come back?
Okay, and then perhaps we can back up. The, the next situation is where we have consistency with both the existing zoning ordinance and the new general plan, but there are new policies in the general plan that would apply to the use or the development. And so in this case, staff is asking if you would like to have an interim ordinance that would require some kind of a review process to ensure compliance with the new policies in the general plan. And if that's the direction the council gives, staff would recommend that we exempt single-family and two-family development because the volume that we experience is just so great that the staff or the Planning Commission, whoever would be assigned this discretionary review, couldn't possibly keep up.
So what would happen to those homes? I mean, they'd have to wait a year or something until-
No, they, they're consistent with the zoning, and, and they would just be able to go ahead.
Oh, so they would have to comply with the new policies, is what you're saying?
No, we, we would not have a, we would not be recommending a, a review process to ensure their compliance with the new policies.
What are some of the examples of policies that a sing, that would apply to a single-family and multifamily, or, well, the single-family and two-family houses that, that we would lose out on if we exempt them?
They mostly relate to consistency with the character of the neighborhood and, and the size of the houses and, and appearance from the street. There was language about avoiding a, a box-like character. These were the policies that were included in the new general plan to address what we were calling the issue of larger homes or mansionization.
Well, now, how are you going to be able to check those after those policies become a part of, what, the zoning code? Any more easily than you can check them now?
Well, because when they become part of the zoning code, we will have an established process. We will establish who is going to be the reviewing authority, whether it's going to be at the staff level or the Planning Commission level. We can assess whether it's going to require additional staff to do this. Standards, how, how strictly conformance to those guidelines is going to be required. I think there's still a lot of details to be worked out on that.
I guess the next question is, how long is it gonna take us to get that? So how long is this exemption going to last?
We are estimating about 18 months.
So how many homes you think might come through the pipeline?
That I don't know.
100?
Could, could be.
Those are new homes, right?
Yes. New construction.
What about tear-down and remodels?
I, oh, I, I'm including that in, in new construction of a new home.
I guess that, to me, we, we adopted and went through a significant process to get policies that would improve the character of the community, and for us to forget about them for 18 months seems like, it's just not what we voted on. So I don't know what the other members of the council might say.
What type of review would we have to have? I mean, is it spending an hour looking over somebody's plans, or does it 10 hours, 15 hours?
Well, I think that we would need to, first of all, include in the interim ordinance some more detailed guidelines than, than we have in the general plan. I might typically say that this is the kind of review that could be done at the, the staff level, but because this is something new for Newport Beach and not something that our staff has been trained to do or, or has done very much in the past, we might want to send these to the Planning Commission. So it's going to take a longer for the applicants.
Well, in my mind, I'd rather see at least a staff person look at it, you know, if that's all it's, I wouldn't want to send 100 homes to the Planning Commission maybe, but to have a staffer just kinda, you know, if it's not overly burdensome.
Mr. Mayor? Well, without having some established criteria in a, in a procedure, just having staff look at, there's gonna be a lot of arbitrary decisions being made, and I don't think the staff would be very comfortable doing that.
On the other hand, the areas of main concern for design elements were in the single-family residential areas. So I mean, we're sort of disregarding one of the main focuses if we just throw up our hands and say we can't handle it.
Mr. Mayor, the compliance with general plan policies for all projects except single-family and two-family will still require staff to become familiar with the general plan policies and develop a view of how to apply them. Are we saying that doing, that it's a substantial increase in responsibility from that level to also include single-family and two-family? Because it seems to me that the policies, the review of policies is the review of policies. I, I don't, I don't understand why it's such an additional large burden.
It, it's not an increase in the level of responsibility that staffer, the commissioner, or whoever would have, but it's the volume of, of applications that come through because we have such a high level of construction of single and two-family.
And, and that's what concerns me at least, is letting 18 months' worth of houses be built with, without the, the benefits that we had hoped. If it were maybe three months or even a maximum of six months, if there were more of a time limit on the exemption, I, I would, I would feel more comfortable with that.
An interim ordinance could be drafted to limit the, the time for the, for such an exemption. That would be an in-between course.
Sharon, could we maybe look at a three-month interim, in which time that we could come up and, and develop standards and develop a, a process that we could recommend to the City Council to deal with, with future single and two-family homes?
Well, that, that might make some sense because I think what we've been talking about, the reason we're talking about 18 months is we've been talking about doing a complete overhaul of the zoning code and thinking this would be wrapped into that, but maybe if we pulled this out separately and dealt with it on a 90-day basis and then eventually wrapped it into a new zoning code, that might make more sense.
Councilman Henn?
Certainly, dealing with policies is much less burdensome than dealing with the zoning code. So I would support that idea.
Yeah. I think to let it go a year and a half is, is, I mean, we're just talking about too many homes, too many properties, and too many lost opportunities to, to implement some of the changes that we implemented in our new general plan. So, I mean, three months, I guess I could probably live with that.
Can we make sure the three months doesn't start until the 1st of January?
Let's make a deal.
Let's get him, let's give him a full three months.
April 1st? How about April 1st? Does that work for you?
That's fine.
Okay. Why don't we move along in the presentation?
Okay. And then, our last category is, is of course the most complicated one. This is where uses and density, intensity would be consistent with the new general plan, but inconsistent with the existing zoning and still subject to the new general plan policies. And in the staff report, I divided that into some subcategories. In some areas, such as the airport area and in Newport Center, to allow the, the new residential development, the property owner is required to, to prepare a plan and a regulatory document. And so staff thinks that we can leave the lead on that with the property owners and let them submit applications, and that's not one that, that we need to be concerned with immediately. For the, the rest of, of the areas, and these are mostly the, the subareas that we focused on in the general plan update, the City Council could decide to discourage individual amendments. And that could be done citywide or, or just in the coastal zone, because in the coastal zone, amendments would need to be to the zoning code as well as to the coastal land use plan. And, and these are all legislative acts, and so the City Council has full discretion as to whether to approve them or not. If the City Council thinks that, that you would rather wait for a comprehensive approach, and you would not be too inclined to approve individual amendments, I think it would be helpful to- property owners to know that before they spend their time, effort, and money to prepare them. And staff really wanted to call out the individual amendments to the coastal land use plan separately, because, you know, we are still in the process of trying for certification of our full local coastal program. And we will, we have a concern that if individual amendments go to the coastal commission to the land use plan that they just approved, that they may not see the overall plan that the city has for that area. And those individual projects and perhaps the revision to the general plan as a whole in the coastal zone might not fare as well as if we brought it all in one comprehensive amendment. The other option for these areas is an interim ordinance that would establish a temporary review process and perhaps some criteria in addition to compliance with the policies in the new general plan. And if we were to go this route, staff would suggest that it be, again, a legislative act that would allow the uses to go in. So, again, retaining the full discretion for the city council. And then a final option would be that the council could just process individual amendments in the normal course without a temporary review process and without any special findings or necessarily a legislative act.
Could you give us a little bit more detail of what might go in an interim ordinance? What might be in there?
We would say that in these areas, a use that's consistent with the new general plan could be approved without an amendment to the zoning code, but with some other kind of legislative act approved by the city council, as long as it complies with the new general plan policies and meets certain criteria for things such as neighborhood compatibility, appropriate traffic flow, things like that.
Does that have the potential to take nondiscretionary projects, then turn them into a discretionary project?
No, I don't think so, because without the temporary process, they would still need to be applying for individual amendments to the zoning code, and so that's a full discretionary process.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Would you say that if we did the discourage individual amendments, citywide or just local coastal, and we say the local coastal plan, that that in effect is sort of a moratorium for everything in the coastal area?
It would be a form of, it's a moratorium in that you would be letting the property owners know that you're not going, you want to do citywide or at least coastal-wide amendments to the zoning code. And you don't want to do them on an individual basis. It's different. A moratorium is usually envisioned by use permits or other types of uses. It's, usually moratoriums do not connect to a zoning amendment or a legislative act.
But he might be thinking it's kind of a de facto moratorium.
Well, it's a de facto information that the zoning code does not comply with the new general plan. And so you're basically giving the property owners the message that they can come in and apply for, and I think one of the reasons why, Sharon and I discussed this a little bit, one of the reasons why the council might want to consider that is that if there is an influx, and maybe there isn't, but if there is an influx of individual zoning amendments, then the council will not be in a situation where they're looking at the big picture for what zoning for the particular general plan amendments that did come about. And also, staff will be spending, it'll be very staff-intensive for staff analysis of these zoning amendments without compliance or without reference to council preferences, so that it will delay the ability for staff to be actually processing the amendments and the regulations. And it might extend out that eighteen months, depending upon the number. So it's more, it is a form of a moratorium, but it is not something that you have an obligation to do, at least on a legislative basis.
Okay, to expand on that just a little bit more. So, in other words, we have a new general plan that allows some changes of uses that the current zoning doesn't have in there, so that those types of uses would not be able to be considered, even though they're in the general plan, until a new zoning code or new land use plan, coastal commission land use plan is approved. Now, what are some of the things that might change in the zoning code that would be different between what's existing and what's the new one that we are adopting that would be substantially impact both the staff as well as the property owner?
Well, the example that I think of most often for this one is the introduction of residential use in Mariners Mile. That's a new use. The existing zoning and specific plan in that area do not allow residential use. We don't have standards for residential development in that area beyond the policies in the new general plan that talk about the public view corridors and public access and the size of the property that's required in order to do the residential at all. And so if one property owner comes in with their own application to amend that zoning and the coastal land use plan, then we wouldn't have it in context of the others. We'd be establishing a patchwork of development regulations, possibly, and each one would go individually to the coastal commission, who might not be aware of the city's overall plan for the coastal zone or even for the Mariners Mile stretch.
I think part of the information given to the coastal zone is we tell them what we're planning on doing. But it seems like to me, now, how would, how would the, let's say, the mixed use in Mariners Mile, as far as zoning code regulations differ that much from what's being considered, say, in the Cannery Village, or what has been constructed in the Cannery Village, or what is being considered for the development that's down off of, next to Woody's Wharf in that area?
I think it would be quite different from Cannery Village, because in Cannery Village, we have a number of small lots approximately thirty feet wide. Mariners Mile, the general plan says that residential is allowed only with a parcel that has frontage of two hundred or two hundred fifty feet.
Two hundred.
Two hundred feet.
Are there other areas in the city that currently today are developed with the type of residential that might be proposed for Mariners?
I don't think so.
Probably not, no, the distance requirements, lot size.
Okay, that's one of the, well, I just am not, I'm very reluctant to saddle a property owner with the requirement that we have a new general plan that allows a new use and, oh, but that's fine, you have to wait until we adopt a zoning code in eighteen months before you can do it. So I personally feel that we need to put together something that provides for people to at least propose those items, and if it requires a separate submittal to the coastal commission, so be it. I'm afraid that the coastal commission is going to delay the process to where it may be longer than eighteen months, based on past experience. And I think that we need to give our property owners an opportunity to make their case before the commission, assuming that we can put together a reasonable set of zoning conditions that we think will apply to what will be adopted in the future.
Could one imply that same logic to any other property, and, you know, thus you get the patchwork? I mean, it's either going to be comprehensive or...
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, I tend to agree with Councilmember Webb on this. And it seems to me that a practical way to approach this would be to, we have all of the policies in the general plan, and while we're, while this may not be perfect, practicality isn't always perfect. We've got all these policies in the general plan. We'll be developing our zoning ordinance and other implementing measures. And during that interim period, any property owner that wants to move ahead consistent with the general plan, allow them to write their own specific plan of zoning regulations for their property and submit it to the city for consideration, and then we can evaluate it as to its consistency with the general plan. And that way, we'll be, you know, able to allow these properties to move ahead in a logical and orderly manner. But if we put a de facto moratorium, well, you know, Councilmember Webb is right. I mean, we don't know how long the coastal commission's going to take to approve all of our stuff, and it could be substantially longer than eighteen months, which properties in the coastal zone. And, you know, in your example on Mariners Mile, for example, the, if there's a two-hundred-foot minimum frontage, there's not going to be that many properties in there that are going to qualify for that. I think we only identified about five or six, if I remember correctly, in our general plan studies that actually fell within that category. So it's not like we're going to have a, you know, a whole bunch of properties in Mariners Mile, all of a sudden submitting a bunch of individual specific plans and, or PCs, whatever you want to call them. But it would be their own set of zoning regulations for the property that are consistent with our general plan. To me, that seems like a practical way to approach this.
Councilman Hen?
I share Councilman Webb's concerns, but I also am still concerned about this possibility of falling into zoning in properties that could be contiguous, where the first property that gets through, in effect, sets the zoning template for the properties in that immediate area. And I'm not sure that's what we want either. The voters spoke very clearly about the new general plan and the need to execute consistently with it. And I worry, I think that's a real mandate that we have to be cognizant of as we go forward here. And I still am reluctant to go forward with patchwork solutions on...
Well, you know, if we're evaluating the projects to the overall general plan, let's just say on Mariners Mile, for example, since that seems to be where we're focusing, if we know in totality what we're looking for in Mariners Mile through the general plan, it seems to me that taking, you know, projects on an individual basis really isn't patchwork because we're plugging it into what the general plan vision is.
Also, I don't think when they, I'm sorry, but when they, we did pass a general plan, and I don't think anybody anticipated in their vote that we were going to stop construction in a whole bunch of areas for eighteen months. I don't, maybe those of us who worked on it realized there was going to be an implementation period, but I don't think the general public, that's not what they were voting for. And we do have policies, and the policies will be guiding us. And I think the policies are clear.
Except the application of those policies still allows for a lot of variance in solution at the zoning level, does it not? I'd be curious about staff's view of that.
I think they do. They're not complete. The real thrust of the policies, again, if we're focusing on Mariners Mile, we're on the view corridors and the public access, the mixture of use to ensure that it's not just residential with some token commercial uses.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Curry?
Councilman Hen, I share your concerns, too, about sort of a patchwork approach to zoning, but I think those decisions ultimately are going to come to us. And we'll have the opportunity to exercise judgment in terms of the quality of those proposals and the consistency with the vision for the general plan. And that gives me comfort that we can prevent the kind of patchwork that I think you rightly are concerned about by bringing them here. And I, again, I share Councilmember Webb's concern that an eighteen-month moratorium is just simply not acceptable, I think, in terms of keeping fidelity to the voters.
Mr. Mayor? Yes? One more comment on this. I look at, perhaps this is an opportunity for us to, to, I guess the first guys in the box are going to be subjected to a little more scrutiny than the others in trying to determine what, how to implement the general plan policies. But I also think that it's going to give us and the staff a better opportunity to see where the pitfalls are in trying to establish that zoning. I don't, I just don't feel that sitting down and spending eighteen months working on a zoning code and bam, it's implemented, is going to necessarily solve the problems when you could, it's called patchwork, is what has been described down at that end, but I don't consider it that way. I think that if we do a good job of looking at the policies we've implemented, that we can begin to craft the zoning code based on experience. And yes, we may not catch everything the first thing through, or we may be a little bit too restrictive and have to back off a little bit in the zoning code. But I really feel that we need to keep it open and work within the new general plan.
Okay. Is there any more to your presentation?
The only other thing was that we have recommended the formation of a committee for general plan and LCP implementation. And staff is recommending that that committee consists of three city council members and three planning commission members. And unfortunately, we did not include the resolution itself in your packet, but you have it this evening. So let me just read the duties that are proposed for this committee. First, revision of the coastal land use plan, revision of the zoning code, completion of local coastal program implementation plan, study of infrastructure needs associated with development authorized in the general plan, and establishment of developer impact fees for infrastructure, revision of city council policies, revision of building code, any other means of implementing the general plan that may be assigned by the city council. And we would be asking that they develop a work program for these things and oversee the progress on all of these items.
Would development or games be included in your chair?
I thought that would be included in the city council policies.
You know, the report here only had blanks for me to add council members to the committee. Were you expecting the planning commission appointments tonight as well?
No, I was expecting the planning commission to appoint their own.
Point their own? Okay.
Mr. Mayor? In the overall process with this committee's operation, is there any opportunity as they get their work product or going through their product to where we could have some sort of public input to, like, we've gone through a process where we had the G-PAC and formed the general plan based on a lot of public input. Is there a way that we can get, I'm not asking for the same level that we had in G-PAC, definitely.
Thank you.
But, well, no, that's not...
Eighteen months is a pick.
But some way or another, since the public has helped form this, some way or another to educate them on what's going and what's being done, to where there's some effort to let us know that, yes, we listen to you, and by the way, this is the way we're implementing it, and this is how it's being done. Do you think that's a good idea, or, you know, somewhere or another get the public input?
Yeah. Was staff's idea that this would be like a closed-meeting committee?
Oh, no.
So it would be a public committee with public comment?
Yes, yes. But I think Councilmember Webb is talking about something to inform the community more broadly, and we could do some public workshops along the way. And one of the recommendations we made in the staff report was to sunset the general plan update committee, the general plan advisory committee, the LCP implementation committee, and the zoning code revision committee that was formed a few years ago and really hasn't made much progress because all the effort was put into the general plan.
I think we had one meeting.
I think there might have been two or three.
I only went to one.
I did have an email from one of the citizen members of that committee who suggested that perhaps, and there were two architects, it was one of the architects, Brian Jeanette, and suggested that perhaps that input would be something we would still need through the zoning code revision. And I think that that's probably a good point. And perhaps this implementation committee that staff is suggesting could have a subcommittee or various subcommittees that work on some of these individual projects, and then they could be expanded. And so for the zoning code, we could include some people from the design community. When we're talking about infrastructure, we might want to include others that work on a subcommittee for that particular issue.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
First of all, I support the sunsetting of the existing committees, and I support the creation of the new committee with the joint city council and planning commission membership. But I also think it's important that we have a mechanism for ensuring citizen advice and input into this entire process, because there's a lot to it in terms of the new zoning ordinance, there's a lot to it in terms of how we sort of tackle these issues. And I think that the beauty of the general plan today has been that it has been a product of citizen impact... of citizen input and citizen grassroots development. So without giving the staff specific direction, what I would like to see is to have staff come back with a proposal for a streamlined, newly-appointed committee who would have as its goals and role, an advisory role to this new committee, and an advisory role on the implementation of the general plan as we move through the next eighteen-month process, so that we can be confident that we're getting a good citizen input throughout the entire implementation stage.
So are you suggesting like another GPAC-type committee?
An advisory committee similar to GPAC, maybe we call it something differently, certainly doesn't need to be as large as GPAC, but one that would play that role.
And then how would you suggest that those residents be appointed?
Well, I think I would give staff the leeway to develop a size and a charter, and likely appoint other committees by the council.
I particularly liked Sharon's suggestion that we have perhaps some workshops along the way to where we make people aware of what we have going on. I don't disagree with the citizens committee. It's going to be very difficult to come up with a makeup of that committee that covers the entire spectrum of the city, so staff would have to be extremely creative.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Selig.
Yeah, let me make a comment. Since I was on the last committee that worked on rewriting the zoning code, that took about a year with just, I think we had seven people on it, if I'm not mistaken, or eight, something like, six, was it six? You get into such arcane detail and technical types of things in doing this, that it's really not something that, you know, that I think is really suitable to getting into the nuts and bolts of this stuff of having another GPAC-type of a committee. I think Sharon's idea of having subcommittees out of this committee where we can bring in the professionals in the building and the architectural field to advise us is a good way to broaden the input into the committee. And then we can have general citizen input through workshops and things of that nature where you can really focus more on the broad issues, but to sit there and expect citizens to sit there and go through arcane natures of setbacks and, you know, very detailed types of things on setting grades and things like that, I just don't think is very realistic.
Councilman Curry?
Well, I think my vision for this is somewhat more broad-based in terms of the whole general plan implementation, in terms of its broad policy goals having to do with traffic and water quality, more so than the nuts and bolts of the zoning ordinance change. I think it's good to have citizen input and review of that. I don't think you would necessarily charge this committee with the rewrite of the zoning ordinance, but I think you would charge them with sort of looking at consistency with the general goals that were the key of the general plan, and making sure that our actions are consistent with those goals going forward, more of a big-picture approach, I think, than has been suggested by Mr. Selig.
That would be probably a different scope of the committee than, you know, crafting a zoning ordinance and implementing it, which I would agree with Councilman Selig, it's very detailed.
Well, and I didn't suggest that they would be crafting or necessarily being the review body for the zoning ordinance, but they would be overseeing or providing advice for the implementation of the general plan overall, which includes zoning as one element, but also includes much broader goals in terms of our community and where we're moving forward with the community in terms of an advisory role.
Okay.
And I'm happy to give staff latitude to come back with a charge and a charter for that committee that is complementary to the other committee that's being formed to actually write the zoning ordinance.
Well, actually, I think the committee that we're talking about tonight is exactly that committee that you're talking about. I mean, we're not just talking about the zoning ordinance here, are we, Sharon? We're talking about the whole implementation program for the general plan.
Correct.
So it's just not zoning.
Well, I didn't list in the ordinance elements such as the natural resources, because those, you know, typically are done through other departments, and we have good programs in place now. I was thinking more of the things that need to be rewritten or established, new programs, new fees, that sort of thing.
I would tend to agree with Councilman Selig and Dingle that this is going to be kind of a nitty-gritty, down-and-dirty committee to try and implement all these different policies and things that we do have in the general plan. I think with the fact that it will be an open meeting, and the public is welcome to comment, and I do like the recommendation that we have some type of outreach to the community where we maybe, you know, as we move along, kind of present what we've come up with as a sounding board for final approval. And so, you know, we basically wore down our citizenry, I think, with that GPAC committee. We probably went through every volunteer in town over the course of four or five years. So I don't know that I would want to subject them to that, you know. I think the GPAC served its purpose as an advisory committee on the general goals and policies that we wanted to see in our new general plan, and now it's time for the, you know, the staff and the experts and the council members and the help of our planning commission board members to put those policies and goals into effect. And so I think it will be an open process, and that we will have the public invited to attend, and hopefully that will take care of those issues.
Plus, word shows.
Yeah, well, I think, I would suggest that we leave a little latitude to the committee itself to figure out how they would want to invite the public in to watch the process and make sure that we stay true to what we voted for in November. So with that, is that the end of your presentation? Okay. I think at this time, I don't know what your pleasure is, did you want to discuss the proposals first or have public comment first?
Just put a bit.
Yeah, I think we'll go to public comment. So certainly, if anybody in the public, doctor, would like to comment on our deliberations here, please do. Please come forward. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Immanuel Shulian. I'm a physician cardiologist in this city for the past twelve years, and I have lived in this city and practiced in this city. I am here to explain my situation that I think would bring some highlight in what some of our citizens could, the predicament that could be placed in with the discrepancies between the two plans. In 1995, I began assembling properties along Old Newport Boulevard, and I placed my office in one of them. At that time, I was well aware of the fact that the Old Newport Boulevard's specific plan calls for a specific recommendation, including mixed use and also the right of merging lots in order to get a higher percentage of build-outs. Within a year, I retained an architect, Brian Janette, to help me implement conceptual plans that were formed, and they were brought to the city for discussions with the staff. The highlight of the plans were that this specific site that I had was specifically very uniquely situated to be used both for a medical office along the Newport Boulevard and for residential area in the backside of it, which is a residential area. Over the next six years, I bought two additional parcels to co-joint them, and throughout this time, we were in discussions with the city regarding the specifics of those plans. In 2003, I had a great idea of opening another imaging center in Newport Beach, which is along Pacific Coast Highway, next to Arches. And because of the enormity of that project, my mind was slipped away from this issue, and I put it a little bit on back burner. And finally, I came back to this project. We opened my new imaging center in February of this year, and some of you were present in the opening. Thank you. And when I restarted with my new team to go to the city, and that for the past three months, we brought the plans and we were preparing the final bringing of the plans to the city, and there was no mention of any changes at any of these meetings. And finally, last week, when my architect went to the city to give the final plans, they told him that everything has changed, and the changes that were mentioned, to me, were pretty much baffling. One, that there was no further possibility of lot combining, and two, that there was no further possibility of residential building in that area. I can mention that our last meeting with the city was on April 27, myself and Brian Janette, and there was no mention of any changes coming. To my knowledge, there was no notification to myself nor my neighbors in that neighborhood regarding discussions about these changes that were coming, and to all of us, including to my architect, this has been a surprise. I have acted in good faith for the past ten years with discussions with the city in order to achieve a project that serves myself and the city in the best way. And I think I have been placed in a situation that is hard and unexplainable to me. I would like to ask the council to have a consideration for this issue and continue this issue until further discussions could be made with the city. Alternatively, if that's not doable, a special ad hoc committee to be formed to discuss these special situations along the road. I truly believe that the best use of properties along the area that my property is situated is a mixed use. I have a short presentation of pictures.
Unfortunately, Dr. Shulian, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing this matter to our attention.
[inaudible]
That's true. If Brian wants to come up and make a presentation, I guess we could probably accommodate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations well to all the members of the council and the new ones as well. My name is Brian Janette. I'm, I live, work in the city half for many years. I address 470 Old Newport Boulevard. And I'm not sure that this is the proper time to introduce some of the issues that have come up, but I can say that I was involved, I was chairman of the ad hoc or the specificary plan committee, where we spent three to four years developing the language for the specificary plan. Many of the building owners, landowners, were involved with that process, and it was beguiling to me that I had no clue that it was going to be an FAR reduction. I also sit on the economic development committee, and we discussed, to quite lengthy extent, the things that Old Newport Boulevard needs some infusion of something, and it was determined a lot combining would create an incentive to score footage, that setbacks and things like that would help to create a community over there that we drastically need. And that was supported by GPAC, by EDC, and I didn't know that, and I would feel somewhat embarrassed that this was going on, and I didn't have an opportunity to at least get those people on Old Newport Boulevard to respond to some of these things. So it was a surprise. I don't think, showing you pictures of the area will help at this point, but I think we have a situation here that I don't know what the answer is. But I think what Dr. Shulian is saying is there's been sort of a miscarriage here, and maybe there's a way to look at it, re-study it, analyze it, there are opportunities. The mixed use was heavily discussed at the time, and it was now, it's been now completely whisked away. And I'm not sure that the planning staff that involved, that wrote the revisions really knew the history of what had gone on and what has gone on at Old Newport Boulevard. So I would welcome the opportunity for any questions that I can answer, but I think the ad hoc committee is, that you're talking about forming is a very good idea, and I'd throw my hat in if it works. Thank you.
We may call any dessert. Thank you, Brian.
Sharon, could you kind of explain?
Is this situation related to the new general plan changes, which in the policies for that particular area, we said no mixed use, and we limited the building area to point five instead of point seven? What has changed that is causing the situation to have occurred?
Exactly what you said, council member.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I understood, so that when we went through and we were looking at all the various different areas in town, and the traffic produced and that type of thing, this is one of the areas in which we felt that some of the property, land use areas were maybe a little bit more dense than the traffic could support, and so we made those modifications. This was during a process of hearings that were occurred between February and June, if I remember correctly, wasn't it?
And Dr. Shulian also came in to see me the other day, and so I went back into my notes from the public hearings, and the city council's straw vote on the changes for Old Newport Boulevard occurred at the public hearing of May 9, which was after the last meeting that Dr. Shulian had with some staff people. I was not among them.
Okay. This was not the only area, though, in town where commercial property, where we changed FARs and things like that?
Oh, no.
I mean, there were significant reductions all over.
Mariners Mile, in West Newport Mesa, I don't know if there was a change from the previous general plan, but there was a change from the project we had analyzed in EIR, and we dropped the FAR down.
Thank you. So anybody else that'd like to comment on this item?
Members of the council, I had.
Please state your name.
My name is David Diamond. I've been a resident of the city for almost thirty years, I think maybe more than thirty years. As part of the general plan implementation, the first issue that was brought, presented was the grandfathering in of uses where there had been a use permit. And Member Hen had suggested where, that this would be expanded to where there was final approval. And I was going to suggest that you limit these grandfatherings to those projects that have had a use permit. I think a use permit is a very powerful, necessary, and reasonable tool for the council to maintain with the use of the planning commission and this council to determine that those projects that are going on, going, continue to be built in the city are complying with the general plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that'd like to comment on this item?
Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Michael Schaefer. I'm an architect principal of Ware Malcolm. I'm representing Orange County ENT group. We as well met with city staff back in April, prepared a mixed-use project at the property at the corner of Hospital Road and Old Newport, the address being 347 through 371. It's the two wood structures just north of Hattie's Pizza. That project that we submitted to staff and went over was also a mixed-use project that had components for medical office, retail, as well as residential component. Due to the due diligence process and the advisements of staff, Orange County ENT went ahead and purchased the property in July of this year, and at this point in time has never received any notice of the changes, nor were we advised of any revisions to the zoning until we met with staff last week to make sure that our package was complete and consistent with what we originally presented to the staff. The Orange County Recorder's Office indicated, I believe, on October 12, The Orange County Recorder's Office indicated, I believe on October 12, that the change in ownership, so whatever records that were shown at the time, city didn't know who the new owner was, and therefore we didn't receive any sorts of information. So I think I'm in the same situation with Dr. Sun as the first applicant came up to talk to you about, and we were directed by staff to present this issue as well on Old Newport and asked for consideration and giving staff direction because they told us our plans as presented were now inconsistent with what revisions are worked to the zoning.
Just a question of staff. Assuming that we wanted to help these property owners, I mean, what would be involved with doing that?
Amendment to the general plan.
So they would have to file for an amendment to our voter-approved general plan?
Voter-approved general plan, yeah. The other way, you know, through the process, you can look at zoning incentives or other things to work within the general plan provision for.
But you can't increase the FAR.
No, you can't increase it.
Or you wouldn't be able to allow residential without a general plan amendment.
Yeah.
Sharon, could you?
Can the law be combined? Can you allow this combination to participate?
You can still do lot consolidation, right?
You can still do lot consolidations.
That's not prohibited by a general.
Sharon, could you please just briefly go through the notification process that we went through related to the general plan hearings and the items that were discussed specifically?
I don't recall the total number of hearings that were held before the planning commission and the city council, but it was somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 each. And for each of those hearings, we did a quarter-page display ad in the daily pilot, and because these hearings were happening so frequently for a few months there, this ad appeared every week in the daily pilot. And that is consistent with state planning law as well as our own local procedures. And by the way, it's not a change in zoning, it's a change to the general plan. That's why we're having this discussion this evening, because they're different. And the law provides that when the city is considering a change in general plan or in zoning that affects more than 1,000 property owners, that rather than sending individual notice, that the notice may be accomplished with a display ad.
Okay, and these ads, as you mentioned, were on a weekly basis, and they were modified to indicate new items being discussed?
We indicated which of the elements of the general plan would be discussed at each meeting and when the environmental impact report was being discussed. We were not specific as to which area, which geographic area of the city. We said land use element.
And the changes that we made to Old Newport Boulevard, I believe, were done in May? Is that when we did them?
May 9 is what my notes showed as the straw vote on that area.
Okay, so by the time Mr. Schaefer's group purchased that property, those changes had already been made, at least tentatively, by straw vote of the city council?
That's correct. Well, and July 25 was when the city council approved the new general plan.
So if they had come in and inquired, they probably would have been told that things had probably changed on that street.
I certainly hope that's what they would have been told.
We met with staff back in April, and that's when we submitted our original plans. You'll see the rendering that's part of the Orange County Business Journal. There was actually an article on the project published recently that described the project, and Dr. Sun was interviewed, and in that article, it went on to say that he had met with staff and that the project was consistent with zoning and that they were moving forward on the project.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else would like to comment on this agenda item? Please come forward.
My name is Kevin Quick. I'm a commercial real estate agent here in Newport Beach, and I've sold a number of these properties over the last three or four years, some of them two and three times. And I don't know how relevant it is because it was put to a vote and it was put in the paper, you know, from the standpoint, but I know I didn't hear about it and a lot of my owners didn't hear about it, and, you know, with traffic studies and different things like that that take place. And just having such a unique area over there, I think it's quite a bit different than the other parts of the city, just because it's close to the hospital. It's an older area that needs to be revised. So I see it different than, you know, Mariners' Mile and things like that because it's in Coastal Commission and just with all these doctors and everybody that's been calling me and every, the work I've been doing over there has been with these doctors that have been, you know, eager to own a piece of property that they can develop. We looked at the old planning district over there, consolidating lots, getting the floor area ratio up, you know, trying to incentivize these people to buy these properties and turn them into medical buildings or something that looks better than it is now. So, and I sold these gentlemen the property, and with good intention that, you know, we met with the city and that these things were okay, and, you know, I just hope that the council and these guys can do something to get their plan approved, as well as Dr. Shulian and, you know, any of the other people that are trying to get some stuff done right now that don't know about it because it was done so quickly, like you all said. And a lot of us, you know, if we're not on the daily pilot every day looking at legal stuff, then it's hard for us to follow these things. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to comment on this agenda item? Seeing no one, we'll close the public comment period. Why don't we bring it back to council? Is there anybody who wants to make a motion on this item? Actually, before we do that, I'll put it to staff. How do you want us, do you want us to vote on these individually or one big motion?
Well, I was going to, I think I have the sense of where the council is going from your discussion as we went through, so if I can run through that, that may help us.
Why don't we do that, then?
Quickly, all right.
Thank you.
Excuse me. First, I think there was agreement to have staff prepare an interim ordinance that would prohibit uses and developments that are inconsistent with the new general plan, and to include a grandfather provision for projects that had city discretionary approval consistent with the general plan and zoning prior to November 7 of 2006.
And Sharon, for purposes of understanding, would that include, for example, the two projects we heard discussed today from the audience?
No, the Old Newport Boulevard.
They don't have their discretionary approval.
They don't even have complete applications.
Right.
But also, they're not consistent anymore.
Well, but if they had a discretionary approval, it wouldn't matter if they were consistent, would it?
Yeah, we're suggesting with this grandfather provision that if someone had a discretionary approval prior to November 7, that that project could still go forward. And then also, the interim ordinance would require compliance with new general plan policies to the extent that they can. I mean, the ones that are worded, consider the development of guidelines we couldn't enforce, but the ones that we can. And for that, there would be an exemption for single and two-family development until April 1 of 2007. And then the interim ordinance would also establish a temporary review process for uses and developments that are consistent with the new general plan but not consistent with the existing zoning. So, and I don't know if you wanted to say specifically that would be a specific plan or just an interim procedure. And then the committee is proposed by staff.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Selich.
Can I move what she just said?
I was hoping you wouldn't want to repeat it all.
And that's for recommendation number one on providing guidance to the, to the planning director.
Yes. We have a second? Is there any other further discussion? Yes, Councilman.
I just had a question regarding the gentleman's comment about the inclusion of use permit as part of the first part of that resolution. How does that fold into this as it relates to final discretionary approval?
I heard the gentleman suggest that grandfather provision be limited to a use permit, whereas staff had suggested that it be for any city discretionary approval.
And so it's unclear to me how that's more restrictive, less restrictive? Can you just expound on?
Limiting it to use permit would be more restrictive. What staff had suggested would include if someone had a modification permit or some other discretionary approval.
City, I mean, a planning director approval or a planning commission approval.
The concept is that people that obtained a city discretionary approval, whether it's a use permit or a mod permit, there might be some along those lines that we're not aware of, would not have a vested right. So without this interim ordinance, we wouldn't be able to issue a permit because it would be in conflict with the new general plan.
So, so under the construction that staff has, it would be, it would be permit more grandfathering exceptions than the gentleman's suggestion about limiting it to a use permit?
Yes.
Councilor Deagle?
No, I'd go with the staff recommendation.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and we're voting on recommendation number one. Is that everybody's understanding? Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay.
I move we adopt resolution number?
2006-106.
In establishing the committee.
Okay, and why don't I just tag on to that and with number three, approving the mayor's appointment of city council members Selich, Deagle, and Rozansky to the committee. With Selich as the chair. Thank you.
Would you, somebody want to second that?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would just say I'll support the motion, but I want to, for the record, again, reiterate, I think, the importance of making sure that we have good avenues for citizen input and for citizen participation in the implementation of the general plan. And I know the committee will keep that in mind as it goes about its business.
So noted.
Perhaps the committee can actually make a recommendation on the type of workshops or citizen involvement that they feel might help us make that determination.
Okay, thank you.
You might wish to amend the resolution to add public participation as one of the items the committee is to tend to.
We'll be encouraged.
I would make that amendment.
Sounds like a great idea.
So please vote as amended by Councilman Curry's comment.
Motion carries.
I know that, I guess one of the things is that we haven't answered the concern on Newport Boulevard. So the answer really is, the general plan has been changed, and the only way we can go backwards is through a formal general plan amendment.
That's right.
Okay.
Moving along to item 21.
Item 21, establishment of an ad hoc committee for negotiating a development agreement for the Hyatt Regency Newport Beach timeshare proposal.
Is there staff report at all?
This has become standard procedure for the city when we're doing development agreements. It's very helpful to staff if we have two or three city council members who can work with us and the applicant on the development agreement. I think two has been the number we've used in the past, and for this project, a development agreement is required by the municipal code because it includes timeshare.
Okay, thank you. As my appointments to the committee, I'm recommending myself and Councilman Selich. Any comment, council? I'll open this up to public comment. Seeing none, close the public hearing. Move the item.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries.
Madam Clerk?
Motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none, we are adjourned.